We'll call the meeting to order at 6:32. The first order of business is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on June 25, 2019.
Move to approve the minutes of June 22nd?
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the Deeper River Energy Upgrade. Given the crowd that we have tonight, why don't we table that until after we finish the item number four and then give people that have no interest in it other than horses to take off. So we'll move to item four. Actually, probably ought to take a vote to do that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is discussion of exemption of horses from property taxation. As we talked about a couple of weeks ago, I forwarded over the Killingworth language for the exemption that we're proposing, or that we talked about proposing last week over to the town attorney. She's working on getting that done. She's not finished it yet. In the meanwhile, I received an email from Kevin outside Laramare Farms. And there's a lot of folks here to discuss, so we can just open up the floor for discussion if we like. Just to start off, the recap, for the folks that were not here, what we're proposing is an exemption, a local option exemption for horses of a certain market value, patterned after the exemption that the town of Killingworth had put in place in 2014. This allows an exemption for any horse with a market value of $20,000 or less, provided that upon request from the town assessor, owners shall be required to provide documentation establishing the fair market value of any hot horse. Such documentation shall include, but is not limited to, original purchase price, insurance documents, and evidence of any income associated with breeding sale or competition of such We talked about that. I don't know if you guys had any thoughts, any further than that. I believe that it's a very good compromise solution to a problem that really was not ever expressed to me as a concern until just recently. And we did also talk about last week the fact that the Connecticut Assessors Association has reported that of the 169 towns in Connecticut, 30 exempt horses over $1,000. And one of those 30 is Killingworth, which exempts horses at a threshold of 20. So with that said, if you guys don't have anything else to say, I'd certainly open up the floor.
Thank you guys for talking. Again, we do appreciate kind of open dialogue. I think, you know, the whole goal when we approached you tiny guys group early on was to have this as opposed to, you know, kind of one-on-one. I think everybody, and we've obviously communicated a lot more recently, I think is good for the group. But again, kind of thank you for the opportunity. You know, I know you've done some research and have had legal counsel look at it, and we've done the same. You know, and I think your numbers of 30 towns is absolutely correct. I think the point that's really kind of critical is that that was only put into place in 2014. So it's, a lot of towns are understanding, and I think the big piece of it is that the assessment piece is the harder animal as opposed to the dollar now. So I do see what you're saying as a compromise. You know, we're trying to be rational people too. And 20,000 is definitely better than nothing. The issue becomes, you know, the assessed value. And when we start to talk about bill of sale and legal documents to verify a price, I've done some research in terms of talking to veterinarians, because I watched your meeting. We work here. I kind of studied and went over. And I spoke to a very well-respected vet who works in multiple states in New England and all the way down the east coast. And he said they don't get involved in putting numbers on horses, ever. That's not their job. So a bill of sale is only accurate on a purchase the day of the purchase. If that horse walked out into a field and tore a suspensary, that horse is now worth nothing. So we had a horse, a young horse, that was injured, that may never jump again at this point. And I think the intent of the statute originally in '14 when they put it in place, and Joan's gonna go into some of this in a little more detail for us, there was a lot of debate. And I know we both talked to OPM, we've talked to the commissioner, you know, we've talked to, as much as you've done, we've done the same. And I think some of the answers have been the same, some of them maybe a little different. And again, I think unfortunately, some of this stuff would take going to court to resolve. I don't think there's any case law at this point over this that would kind of clarify it. And the legal advice that we've gotten, you know, kind of said, look, he doesn't agree with James in terms of the interpretation, but he also said that it would most likely take, you know, going to court to kind of resolve it. So I think, kind of trying to be forward-thinking, and I think that was what the legislative body did originally, was trying to go, look, it's not Robin's job to try to figure out the value of the horse. And we've already, in the short period of time that we've been here, we just have a customer that got a bill. It's a 22-year-old male mayor, and it had a value of $4,562 put on it. She had a traumatic injury 15 years ago. She's not worth anything. So how did that number come up? And more importantly, if we press on it, the process and the cost to you guys, because it will be costly. I mean, that's, at the end of the day, I understand, you know, you guys are trying to go, okay, well, now we have these streaming businesses, and we gotta be able to generate some more revenue other than the property taxes and all the personal property taxes that we're already paying. And I get it, that's the town's job, is to make money for the town, but at a cost that I think is gonna cost you more money. And I think we're in a position where we have so much on the line, and we've already had customers leave the town because of the taxes. I mean, that's factual. So I think at some point, you guys really need to weigh out in the overall decision-making process, do you want to impede business, new businesses? I mean, these guys are new in town, we're new in town. Jack, I think, has been here a long time, but wasn't maybe necessarily aware of how some of this stuff was done until recently. And I think, you know, I know I sound like a, you know, beating a dead horse, but no pun intended.
Yeah, that's not a good term.
Don't do that. You know, but we're really just not feeling pro-agricultural vibes. So, you know, my, I know you did this draft from Killingworth. I know we've talked to the commissioner, their legal counsel's gonna look into it some more. And again, I think we brought quite a few, we brought packages for you guys that Joan's gonna look at our hand, you guys, but I think we appreciate the compromise in regard to trying to work. And that's where I'm trying to be rational and go, these guys are, they're making an effort to kind of go forward, which is huge. And I commend, I commend all you guys on that. That's great. But I just, I don't think the process after this goes in place is gonna be as cut and dry as you think. And I think it's gonna open up a can of worms for everybody, for you guys. And what I'd like to hear explained tonight, hopefully from you Angus and Jim and Duane, is how that process really works in terms of, okay, you want a bill of sale, you know, just elaborate in detail how that is gonna work. Because I don't know that that's realistic in terms of, unless we wanna get into more legal issues. And I don't know that that's really in anybody's best interest.
Could I ask one quick question?
Absolutely.
On Laramare Farms Facebook page right now, or within the last couple of weeks, there was a horse listed for sale for $60,000.
Okay.
There had to be some way of assessing the value of that horse.
Well, when you sell one of your old cars, you could buy it for 20, you could buy it for 10, and you could train the heck out of it, polish it up, and put a number on it. So I think, and again, you could get, I mean, we have young kids who see a, you know, we have people look at hundreds of horses collectively. They may go to Florida and try 20 horses, they may go here, they may do that. But at the end of the day, you go to pick out an antique, you find a connection to it, right? So it's an emotional connection. Is there, is there a blue book for a horse? No. And that's, that's what's gonna get really sticky quick. And if you think you're gonna get a vet to come into town and say, that horse is worth $65,000.
I think I was the one that mentioned the vet.
Yeah.
And what's, Jane was asking, you know, about that situation. And I said, she says, what if, like you said, the horse was damaged and now it's worthless? The only one that could basically say that would be a vet. I would think that, yes, it's diagnosed with a problem, it is no longer the $60,000 horse or whatever. And thus, it would be, I'm probably oversimplifying it, might be as simplified as a vet saying that horse now is a pet only, and then that goes to her, and it's adjusted. I mean, if you get a tax bill in town that you don't think is correct, you go and you visit the assessor's office, and you work it out as to what it should be with whatever facts are out there. And, you know, I might be oversimplifying it, but if a horse is no longer valuable because of an injury, then a vet would be the one to say that. And that information could be conveyed, and, you know, so it might be oversimplifying it, but it...
I think, I think what would be more discovery on both sides would probably enlighten everybody a little bit. I mean, listen, we're learning every day, right? I know more about the statutes than I ever cared to know. And I still don't know a quarter of it. But I'm understanding, and we're getting a lot of education through legal counsel, through the commissioner of agriculture, I mean, you know, OPM, all these different bodies. And I think if you guys, like I said, if you maybe take the time to really look at it, the reason that they, it was kind of a, it was explained to me as a light switch, it's on or off, and I get it, then this is where we lose or we lose. At 20,000, it helps a lot of people out.
Every horse in Deeper River now is valued at less than 20,000.
If, if people start to change with the having of arms, horses get hurt, values are baited, it's gonna get very complicated. And again, I think we're even, we're even a little bit concerned about how some of the values have been put on the horses, you know, privately.
I could speak to that. Every value that has been placed on the assessment roll is based on what the taxpayer has sent in, has filed with the assessor's office.
So we could come, we could come talk to you about...
Your 4,000, whatever example you had given, that would have had to have been filed by that declaration. So if something is different with the horse from '10, '18 to now, then it is as simplistic as you've stated. This is just information that needs to be brought to the assessor's office.
Yeah, because the customer, and again, that's another kind of side note, but the customer didn't come up with that value. So I don't know, and we didn't fill any of them out for anybody, that's on our job. So I think, I think more discovery, and I understand Killingworth did that, I also, this is not factual, I tried to reach out to the assessor, and Killingworth was not able to get, he was off yesterday, was not able to get a hold of him. But I mentioned why I was calling, and the secretary or whoever said, oh, yeah, that. So I don't think it's turned out exactly the way they anticipated it either.
That's, yeah, that remains to be seen.
I can tell you.
I can just know what's going on in town in Deeper River. You know, that's my, my interpretation, is that they know what's going on here, and thus rolling the eyes or making the comment. It could be different, it could be different.
Exactly. 2014, they started the, I think it was, I think it was Doug Devesi, if I'm saying his name right, actually lobbied with Killingworth to get rid of the tax altogether. And I mean, that's how you started out the meeting today as well. He said, we're gonna start the meeting and talk about the exemption of taxation on the horses. And that's, the last time I was here, I was ribbon Angus to say, yeah, we wanna get rid of it, we don't wanna try and put a number on it, we're trying to get rid of it. So I believe that, and I believe that the people in Killingworth that are there actually had none, and somehow another assessor came in, or another selection came in or whatever, and that changed. And I, unfortunately, I think that that is targeting somebody, so, I mean, there's lots of horses from Killingworth as well. For the amount of work and money that you're gonna make and lose, we're still trying to get it eliminated, and I'm sure that you'll, hopefully by the time we finish our meeting today, you can say, yeah, absolutely.
May I ask one question? What, when is the horse gonna be assessed? Like, are motor vehicle services, that's on July 1st or something like that, right?
Everything is October 1st. Everything is October.
So what first you're gonna come and look at all these horses and say, this one's worse?
Nope.
No, so the same process that we've been doing forever. The list will go out, personal property declaration will go out from the assessor's office to all the farm owners and also all the horse boarders. And then you have until November 1st to file that declaration back to the assessor's office. If an extension is needed, I can also grant you until December 15th.
So if you, so if your horse is, is like a $20,000 horse on October 1st, and then he breaks his leg, yes, you know, tomorrow, that might happen.
Well, that's...
Right, so then, the previous grant, so if there's something that you would have, so it was 20,000?
What if, what if, what if this is not the next day? What if you paid tax on this horse, and then all of a sudden, you know, he's no good anymore? You're gonna get a refund?
There's no benefit, there's no proration allowable in the law on personal property, so it would go to the next grant last year, who would be filing either what the value is of the horse now at that time, or if you no longer own the horse.
What happens if you have a horse, and I buy my kid a horse and I pay $40,000? And I think my kid's starved. My kid can't ride my side of the market. Now, that horse, do I get to in the second year, is that horse still worth 40,000? Or do I depreciate it? He's now worth 10,000 because my kid's gotten so screwed up.
Well, that's...
How does Robin know that?
It's a declaration. When you, when the horse owner submits it to her, you declare it.
You put your money in his account?
No, but you say the horse is not, you know, whatever.
Well, in the end, if I buy that horse for 40,000, when I go to sell that horse, he's worth what the meat man will give me per pound, unless I have a check in hand and a cash in hand for that horse, something about it. Otherwise, that's all they're worth.
What are you insuring the horse for?
A lot of people don't, can't afford to insure the horse.
$40,000 horse?
That's right.
$80,000 horse?
Costs a lot of money.
Uninsured.
Angus, I think part of this is...
So that horse breaks its leg, it's worth nothing, and you've got no recompense for that?
Nope. Happens all the time. It happens all the time.
Could I ask why? When you have that big an investment, why you wouldn't insure?
Because really...
You would insure your car, you would insure everything that you own.
You don't make a lot, there's not a lot of money in the business.
This isn't, this isn't the business that I'm asking, it's the person that owns the horse, they're not the business owner.
So people really don't have a right to spend that kind of money on a horse.
No, but what I'm saying is, you know, it's, it's the horse owner that does that, it's not the boarding facility that does that.
Well, what happens to, now, say I were to go to Angus, and I was some kind of a tax collector, and I said to Angus, because this happens to the big barns, I say to Angus, I want a list of all the people that you've done design for boats, so I can go in and go check them out to see how long that boat's been there. Is it an out-of-state boat? Should it be registered in Connecticut? Is it, you know, a Massachusetts boat? You know what I'm saying? It shouldn't be up to Jill and Kevin to police and provide, isn't that a privacy thing?
The only thing that the law requires is that they provide with a listing of what personal property is referenced as personal property in the state statutes. So they're not policing it, they're not going, sending out the declarations, they're just simply providing the list.
Robin, out of curiosity, what law states you have to give somebody else's private?
It's under the personal property regulation, so give me a second, I can pull the exact statute out.
While you're looking for that, you have a question?
Yeah, or...
Okay.
With the horse, the horse insurance, it's kind of, there's different types you can have. So if you get, I think it's called catastrophic, if your horse goes out and gets, like, stuck in a fence and it rips a ligament, and your vet will cover that, or the insurance will cover that, if your horse goes out and gets really bad line disease and goes completely insane, your vet bill's not gonna cover that. So you're decreasing that value, and the vet's not gonna be able to insure that. That's just how some horse insurances work. You're not always guaranteed what you're getting. And I went over and I talked to Killingworth this morning, and she gave me kind of a brief synopsis of what was going on. It wasn't the assessor, it was his assistant. She had said in the past, the tax on, I think it was business and personal property, something kind of got out of whack with that, so it got to the point they completely scrubbed it and put on the $20,000 tax or above for the horses. At this time, there's only about 10 horses being taxed. And that is it. There's no, but I can, there's just so many others that are worth more than 20,000 that are under the radar.
Right.
And no one knows. And it's kind of like, why are you wanting to go after these people that are actually getting...
It's not, well, I think the terminology of going after, it's just, it's Connecticut state law, so it is, this is the regulations that we live under. So horses are taxable. They, they have been for, you know, this new regulation.
Doesn't Connecticut state law say that we don't have to have this tax?
Right.
It also says that we do.
It says you can.
It says you can. And if, if the Connecticut state law did not want this, then the Connecticut state legislatures would vote to, to change the law so that this was not a question. All the legislature has to do is change the law to, horses in Connecticut shall not be taxed, just like to do with cows and pigs and everything else.
But why can't we leave the way and take that stance? And, well, this is...
If you guys could do that right here.
You can step across it, and you take that...
You know, like all of their towns are doing that way.
Hi, for the record, it's Joan Nichols, Director of Member Relations and Community Outreach with Connecticut Farm Bureau. So I have a couple of packets that I'd like to share with you, and then for the record, I will go over like the back information, I have one for Robin, two, and my, so with Michael, and if you, if I didn't bring enough talk, we can have you email it to you. So as I had said in previous meetings, Connecticut Farm Bureau was approached by the Connecticut Association of Assessing Officers back in 2014 over the concern that assessors did no longer want to be burdened with coming up with the value of a horse. And so we had some discussion about whether this should be a mandatory state law where the General Assembly just decides, we're gonna change the law and horses will no longer be taxable, as, as right now, it's the only livestock left in the state of Connecticut that's taxable, and should we completely eliminate entirely. One of the things that the CAO said is that there are some municipalities that would like to continue to tax horses. So the compromise at the time when we all sat at the table, prior to going to public hearing, was that we would all agree it would make sense to make this a municipal option, where those towns that chose to not want to tax horses anymore could do that as a municipal option, those towns that wanted to continue to tax horses, which is allowed under state statute, could continue to do so. For the record, I'd just like to, what I gave you is the testimony that was submitted by the Connecticut Association of Assessing Officers, the Connecticut Council of Municipalities, the Connecticut, Connecticut Council of Small Towns, the town of Durham, Working Lands Alliance, the Connecticut Horse Council, and then Connecticut Farm Bureau. This was testimony that was submitted to the Planning and Development Committee at public hearing in 2014. What I'd like to do is just highlight for the record the language that was put in testimony by the Connecticut Association of Assessing Officers. Finally, our current law, and this is related to the assessment on horses, finally, our current law calls for the assessment and taxation of horses over the value of $1,000. Horses are the only living creatures left on the tax rolls in Connecticut. All other farm animals and pets were exempted decades ago. In our opinion, this is an unfair, inequitable, and indiscriminate tax. Assessors are required to value these animals, and to the best of my knowledge, not one assessor in the state is qualified to do so. Animal boarding and animal husbandry are big businesses, but horses are the only ones left taxable. We respectfully request that we consider as part of RB 961, which was a statute that had other technical changes to the state taxation laws, a local option that will allow municipalities the opportunity to fully exempt all horses. This is signed by Carolyn Nadyuk, Chairman PA 490 Advisory Committee, Connecticut Association of Assessing Officers. The other testimony is one from CCM. The one from CCM says, CCM appreciates the Planning and Development Committee's drafting of Section 1 of HB 505.7, as it provides enabling language that would allow municipalities the option to exempt horses and ponies of any value from taxation, rather than mandating an additional property tax exemption on towns and cities. Connecticut Association of Small Towns wrote, "We are hearing from towns, it is very difficult and costly to accurately assess the value of horses and ponies. Moreover, residents often appeal the assessments taking up additional time and resources. As a result, costs associated with the assessment and collection of property taxes on horses and ponies may offset any revenues generated from the tax." And lastly, there's also a letter from the first electman from the town of Durham, also asking that towns no longer have to tax horses if they don't want to. Subsequent to that, the town of Durham was one of the first towns to adopt the enabling legislation, and Durham no longer taxes horses. The last document that I'd like to refer you to is, subsequent to the passage of the legislation in 2013, chairs of the Planning and Development Committee, and also chairs of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee of the Connecticut General Assembly, asked to go to Office of Legislative Research for clarification on the passage of this recent legislation. And in summary, referring to the assessment on horses and ponies, the act also, number one, allows municipalities to exempt all horses and ponies from local property taxes regardless of their use. So, I gave you that in the packet, and then I also gave you public tab 1433, which you've seen before. So we really do appreciate all the time that you've put into this. I know the farmers appreciate it, and I know, you know, Farm Bureau, CAO appreciates that enabling legislation is enacted by the General Assembly, and then we applaud those towns that choose to adopt the enabling legislation. And I know this is a difficult process to go through, but I thought that perhaps the information provided to you could help you make some knowledgeable decisions.
Joan, back in the early 1900s or 1800s, they implemented this tax on horses because that was for transportation?
I believe, and I have to go into citations in the law, going back to the old, like, colonial days, there were days, if you go into the tax rolls, how many sheep you had were taxed, how many, you know, donkeys you had were taxed, how many pigs you had were taxed. And as time went on, as it alludes to, residual to all of that is, and of course, we got away from being a more agrarian society, but as a result of that, horses... but as a result of that, horses are the only animals still taxed in the state of Connecticut, and only, and they're not taxed at all if they're used as far, as, as, as performing. So, it sort of goes back to the old archaic days when we taxed all livestock in Connecticut, when towns were looking to find some way to raise tax revenue. And so, I mean, I'm sure we could go back into the citations and find out when it was changed, but that's basically what the C E A O alluded to, is that it's the only livestock still taxed in the state of Connecticut.
So a working horse is non-taxable?
If it's used as a tractor.
And that's why I'm wondering, I'm just spitballing here, that it could be that a horse is not something that you raise to slaughter. You know, you don't have eggs and sheep and fish, not fish, but cows for beef and eggs and all that. Horses are not worked anymore, in, in generally speaking, unless you're a traditional farmer or an Amish farmer or something like, and maybe... Well, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't see them pulling, I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, that the reason behind it could be, so you don't see horses pulling plows in the field anymore, they're, they're more, and then, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'll, I'll come up and see it and watch them plow the field, I'll, I'll do that, if it's true, then I want to see it.
If you read the definition of farming, it says, the raising of horses and blah blah blah, and...
There's like, there's two sentences in that 490 brochure that mention horses, the rest of the brochure is all about traditional farming.
Well, that, I don't want to talk about 490, entirely different subject, but the point being, if you, if you look at the state definition of agriculture, which includes livestock and horses, it talks about the breeding, management, training of horse. If you have breeding stock, that's agriculture. If you have horses and there are farms that's still in the state of Connecticut, that they farm with horses. You know, if, if you're, if you're training horses, which is part of the state definition of agriculture, you bring a horse, and then the horse people could speak to this far better than I could, but I would assume you could bring a horse into a certain value, train it, their value of training that horse and then selling that horse as a trained animal, I mean, I'm just simplifying it. So the training of horses is agriculture by state definition. So, again, I think the whole, I, I don't want to lose focus of what the intent of the law was. The intent of the law was so that you didn't have to have this discussion ever again of what the value of a horse is, or what it's used for. That, and that's why C E A O was looking at this, so...
Carol, I think Carol, yeah, Carol.
I don't know, like, till I chirp it off, you know? I'm so... So, I mean, that's it, and whether, and honestly, whether you adopted it at 10,000, 20,000, don't, don't adopt it at all, you're still going to be faced every single year with what is the value of a horse. Regardless of what threshold you set it at, or don't adopt the exemption at all, every single year on October 1st, everybody's gonna have to figure out what's the value of a horse.
So, would you be able to, in detail, explain the process of, of assessment? If they question how this is gonna play out going forward? Because we've heard from Robin directly that her cousin or sister, or somebody in Colorado, was helping her with understanding of horses.
I did not say that. Did I say, I did tell you my stepsister lives in Colorado, did I, did I say she's helping me with evaluation of horses? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
I think, I think my point is, is we need to understand how it's gonna be played out there.
Well, so how I would perceive that I would handle it in the assessor's office, there are a lot of resources available online. With the insurance, everything that you talk about, there's beautiful websites that you put in, and you can put your zip code in, and there's 82 horses within so many miles for sale. So if I had a question about a horse, then the first thing I would want to do, if I questioned that the valuation that you're supplying to me, um, if I had any doubts on it, we would first have a discussion on it. If through research, either through insurance statements that you may have, or maybe they do not insure your horses, or looking at other tools that are out there.
What are those tools specifically?
Bill of sale is the first thing that comes to mind, and I know you can say the horse is only worth what, what it's worth a day after, just like when you buy a car.
You buy your car at the dealership, and you pay 50,000 for it, and you drove down the road, you wanted to bring it back.
You buy, you buy a pony that's worth five, and you train the heck out of it, and it's worth 100. It goes both ways.
Same thing with little cars, you know, the older it gets and the nicer it is, and all the numbers match, it's more expensive.
You buy a horse, let's a baby, and it's, and it's worth 5,000, because we don't know how it's gonna turn out. And we've got great farmers here in town, and they raised that, that horse, and they turned that into a hundred thousand dollar horse, and then they make all that profit on it.
Only a lot of money for that.
That's exactly right.
So, so we're just gonna spin around and around and around, and I have no interest in that, and I had this focused conversation. And, and the question was, and you're starting the answer, that's why I want to let you keep going, was, so we're talking about a bill of sale.
I'm basing, I'm basing this on the research that I've done, and, and that, and it's based, right now, this, what we're proposing is based on legislation that exists in the Town of Kellin Moore. We will certainly look further into that and see if there are other ways to evaluate a horse. But right now, it is original purchase price, insurance documents, and I, I have a hard time believing that nobody insures their horses, but evidence of any income associated with breeding, sale, and competition of such horse.
I don't know, repeat the last part again?
Evidence of income associated with breeding, sale, or competition of such horse.
On a practical basis, okay, because we've got all these people in this room that are against this act, I can tell them. Every single one of these people is gonna say, that's not right, that's...
I know, I, it's pretty clear, we're at that kind of conversation. What are, what are our friends, what, what we are offering? If, if everybody here wants to go to court, then, I'm not saying that's where we're gonna land, I'm not saying this is where we're gonna land.
What's gonna happen, because no one here is gonna agree with you.
Well, then we go to court and we figure it out, because this is, this is illegal.
Why put the town in that position? Go to court.
I'm asking you, why are you gonna put the town in that position, right now? Every horse, every horse owner in this town...
We're gonna enforce the law.
There is not a horse in this town that is valued at over 20,000 dollars.
Can I ask you a question on that, please?
Yep.
So has the financial analysis been done on this, and what is the benefit to the town? Forget the other towns, just let me, our town. Can you let me finish my question, please? Has the financial analysis been done? What do we think the benefits are, and have we fully contemplated the risks and the costs? Because it will be a distractor, it will be a dissuader for people staying in the town, coming to the town. It's, it's a lifeline of our community, and it becomes something that differentiates us in a bad way. So we all want to have a healthy, vibrant town, we understand that we need to raise revenues, but have we done the financial analysis, do we know the trade-off?
Let me answer that question first with a question, and then I'll answer what I've done thus far, okay? The first question is, if we adopt this as proposed, then we become one of 31 towns that have adopted an exemption for horses. So you're saying we're driving people away, I'm saying we're doing our best to invite people into our town. Now, financial analysis, this year right now, we, with no, no horses valued over 20,000 dollars, we're going to raise, I think Robin said, 4,500 dollars will be raised in taxes on horses. Now, 4,500 dollars is not a lot of money, and we can laugh about that, and we can buy a pony for 4,500 dollars, but let me tell you what. The horsing, the horse owning community in this town is not the only people that we're paying attention to. We pay attention to 5,000 other people in this town. That 4,500 dollars goes halfway towards getting this town home modernized with a G I S system. That 4,500 dollars goes towards half of a, half of a chipper. That 4,500 dollars goes a long way, and we spent six months preparing this, this year's budget, cutting 4,000 here, cutting 1,000 here, trying to get this so we can keep our taxes as low as we can. So I believe, and I, this is a board of selectmen, this is not me that's driving this, this is a board of selectmen, but I believe that the proposal that we have put forward is a very fair, equitable compromise to a situation that folks that it affects badly are gonna scream and yell, and they're gonna sue the town. Folks that it affects positively are gonna say, thank goodness that everybody's thinking in a rational way. This is, if, that's what I believe, that's what I think, and that's why I've pushed this forward. We have a board of selectmen to take this vote, if you guys disagree with that, as you apparently do, then bring it up as much as you can, I like having the conversations, but I like it when a conversation goes both ways, not just boom, 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 and that's how it feels like right now, from my, from my side.
We were actually asking, I think, you seem to be getting really upset, and we're all really calm.
I'm not intending to be defensive, I'm really trying to understand the business track.
So I may say something, again, like Angus said, we're talking 4,500 dollars, 4,600 dollars, doesn't sound like a lot of money, to take off the tax roll. But we just took off the property that the Valley Regional bought, up there was 14,000, I think.
Yep.
So that's 18,000, almost 19,000 dollars that was taken off the tax roll. We keep adding these up, adding these up, and it's gonna affect the whole community. I understand, Kevin, I had a conversation, I understand all the farms, I understand 100%, but if we keep...
Why did, why did they get taken off the tax roll?
Because it's a school, or a school district, because the school owns, if they don't, the school don't pay taxes. So that, again, a lot of people don't know that, we know that, Jimmy Knight know even better.
14,000 dollars now you just lost because of...
The school bought it.
The school bought a commercial piece of property.
Which I think is wrong. When we evaluate, you wanna...
Go to the school, or who's the school?
Excuse me?
Regional school.
Regional school, sorry, two years ago, Bobby's, uh...
Okay, the way that I, the way that I look at it, when Valley Regional was built in the early 50s, that plot of property was tax exempt. When John was, was built in the 70s, that property was tax exempt. It didn't say you can keep buying a piece of property that's tax exempt, and that's been my argument with the school board, and I've said to Angus, because I don't believe in that, but so we're fighting that battle. So we have battles all around that we're fighting to keep the taxes as low as possible for our community here. And, and none of us want to pay more taxes than we have to, but we want a beautiful town.
Well, historically, we've been pretty fiscally responsible, you know, hats off, but I, I think our concern is, if, if we're, if we're doing okay, are, are we doing it at a cost, a long-term cost, to, you know, uh, an industry that everybody's going, we're pro-agriculture, we want the farmers, we want this, and the P O C D is very clear in that, and it says right in there, we've given it to you, provide tax incentives for the agricultural community. Between the three of us, we're paying a pretty good amount of property tax. And the, Joan pointed it out multiple times, the, the amount that you spend on us in terms of services?
It's pennies.
It's pennies. So, I, I, I think you're right, it should be productive, and, and where I was going, Angus, was, I really, and if you need more time to formulate it, let's spell out the exact process, because it's gonna happen. So we all understand, because now, are our customers, if Robin doesn't agree, is, are our customers gonna get, have to, have to pay for a, an appraiser? That's how it's acting. If the town, so maybe the town should hire a full-time horse appraiser, or have an renter.
We, we've been assessing horses for years, so I, I guess I'm not understanding why you're perceiving that this is all of a sudden gonna turn into a nightmare.
Because now you have, you've made it a point to target the horse owners.
I'm not targeting, no, we, we have done nothing different, except now they're trying to come up with a compromise for, to give an additional amount, to which, based on your declarations, they're all tax exempt already.
If we, if we adopt the 20,000, there is not a horse in the Town of Deep River right now assessed over 20, and that 4,500 dollars is gonna go away if everybody's honest with your assessment. So everybody's off, you, you're, nobody's gonna be paying taxes on those horses. You know, but if they're, but if they are...
So, we're all very forward thinkers, we're all very forward-thinking, and I think that, you know, you want this to be a growing community of horse farms, right? We've got a good thing going, they built a beautiful farm, he has a beautiful farm, like, it, it, it's, it's got hold in town. But I had somebody call the other day who's looking at properties, and I, I said to him, I'm like, I won't do it. And do you want that?
Too bad you didn't call anybody before you came here.
We did, we, we did, and, and you know, I don't appreciate the digs, the personal digs.
No, that was not personal, everybody that comes into town, it doesn't do their due diligence.
That's unfortunately not very professional.
The town has assessed horses forever, this isn't something new. Everybody, and I'm not saying it's right, but everybody was happy, and everybody was, it was going along, and it was, it wasn't an issue, until recently.
Because no one was being taxed.
Everybody wanted to declare they were being taxed.
Yes, they were.
To go at this.
Yes, they were, this is not new, taxes on horses are not...
All right, so if we put this 20,000 dollar cap on, and you say no horses are being taxed under that deep river now, why, it's gonna be taking the 4,500 dollars off the plate anyway, it's in the cap. So, you're saying that if somebody from out of state is moving up here, and they have a high-dollar horse, okay? And they're looking for a place to go, and they're looking, they're gonna say, oh, Durham, Durham, they don't pay the property tax. But we, we want to allure the fancy horses in, we want, we want, we want good horses.
Yeah, I don't pay a lot of attention to the horse industry, my sister, my sister owns a horse. And they, they keep their horse, and my, and my niece rides horses, and, and I keep telling her, why are you not in Deep River? Why are you not in Westbrook, where as far as I'm concerned, the best barns around are for riding horses? For learning and getting involved in it.
We said Deep River and Westbrook.
So, so those are the two, those are the two towns right now that I, that I know of. She keeps her horse in Middlefield because she likes that trainer, not because she, she has to pay taxes on the horse. Because Middlefield charges taxes on their horses.
Angus, now, I think what, what might help out a little bit is that, you know, my wife and I have been around for a long time, and we don't have super expensive horses, but I can tell you what, Karen, my wife, has been training for quite a few years. She has five students right now, that she brought up through years that she's been doing it. And they're all now national caliber trainers.
That's why I say...
So, it's also important for Karen, and one of her biggest things is to make sure that the kids that she teaches how to ride are, are gonna come away with something, and it's something for them to do. And it's really important to keep the kids coming into the horse industry. But it's also very hard for somebody that doesn't, you know, have a lot of money, but has enough money to buy a horse, but now it's gonna get taxed, so, I mean, Joan has a good point still, that the, uh, we're trying to get rid of it, and I'm still digging that. But it's really hard for the, the trainers and the, the, um, the kids that are coming in for lessons to, to make this community as what it is and can be. So, I mean, this is just something, as Joan said, it's something that can just go away, you know? There's already 30 towns, let's beat 31.
That's the work we're proposing.
To get rid of it, not saying, not saying...
To be part of that 31.
Because you started, because you started right off the bat by calling this, that, you know, we're talking about the exemption of the horse tax when you started meeting, and that's what I'm voting for, all in favor too.
So really, like, you were saying a 20,000 dollar cap, which pretty much means that there will be no tax revenue from any horse in this town. The whole assessment situation, you guys can say, well, I can bring forward five things that say horses are worth this. I can bring forward 10 people that'll say horses are worth this. So this is gonna be a never-ending battle. So if we're automatically looking at taking that 4,500 dollars off of the table, why don't we just take everything off of the table, make Robin's life easier, not having to worry about taxing every horse in the town, and you guys don't have to put up with it anymore?
One of the, one of the things that, one of the...
She just ran off everything saying that it's up to you guys.
Right.
And it's your call that you can make right here and end all of this. You already said you're not gonna make any money, so end it.
One of the reasons that, that I, that I believe that this is an appropriate response to, to this question is because Deep River was, was a forerunner in the state of Connecticut with incubator businesses, and we've called these businesses for the better part of this conversation, have we not? They're farms, but they're businesses, you guys are in business. This incubator system that we started in the state here in Deep River gives people a lower rent, a, a lower cost to start their business in a small place. As soon as that business grows to, to larger, they're allowed to expand to a certain point, and then they need to move out of that low-rent, lower-rent, lower-cost building into hopefully another building in Deep River, and this has worked wonderfully with, with more than a handful of businesses in town. I believe that this does the same thing. It allows for small farmers, small businesses to, to have their horses and to manage that, and as they grow, they benefit and the town benefits, not just they benefit. I think we can do this in a way...
There's no money being paid.
Because you get a horse, you, you, your business grows, you begin to attract horses that are worth more than 20,000 dollars, you, you, you appraise, you assess them... You, you, you appraise, you assess them fairly. The town doesn't have to do any work because you're assessing it fairly, because we're working cooperatively towards growing the town as well as growing your business. And that horse is worth forty thousand dollars, it gets taxed, taxed at forty thousand dollars. So we begin to raise money. I don't understand that.
Are we talking about a personal horse or a personal property tax? Or is this a...
Yes, we are. But we're also, we're, the people that are bringing these horses into town are the businesses. And we're trying to help them get started by bringing in, by allowing for this lower, this threshold of an exemption. I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a very good equation between that and our incubator system here in town.
I think it might deter people that will be... Say you bring them in, they may decide unknown with their expensive horses.
Well, you have existing business, businesses in town that are telling you that that is actually the case. So I, I, you seem very set in your way that that's the way it's gonna be. And I, listen, at the end of the day, it, it's sad that what starts as a, as a debate or a conversation ends in a line in the sand. I think that's kind of short-sighted.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh.
Please, go ahead.
I, I just think, you know, again, why don't we do some more discovery? And, and like I said, it'd really be nice to understand what that process is. And, and has Killmore had to go through one of those audits yet? Because they obviously put it in for the big, we all know what the big farm is that they wanna, they're going after.
I don't, I don't.
Well, we, we are aware of it. And it was definitely in, put in place to target one farm in Killmore.
Well, I think that, I think that there are, we're, we're beginning to go around and around, say the same thing again. So I'm not sure if we're being productive anymore. I've told you that I'm going to do some research as to how this gets done and how it's implemented. But I, I do wanna comment that if, if there's a line in the sand, I think there are two lines in the sand. There may be three. There's a line in the sand that says, we don't do anything. There's a line in the sand that says, we do the proposal. And there's a line in the sand that says, we exempt everything. So I think there's more than one line in the sand, and I'm proposing that the middle line is a good line. I have two other votes here and I'm not, all I'm doing is providing information the same as you are to these guys. They've asked questions, they've listened to this conversation. When it comes time for a vote, we will have three independent votes. I'm not pushing anybody anywhere. I'm interested in everyone's thought, train of thought. And I, I think we need to keep, not keep such a narrow vision, but try to, try to open it up a little bit to how this, does this affects everybody in town, not just our own individual interests. Um, go ahead.
I can understand, like, you're proposing this twenty thousand dollars. If we were a different type of farms, if we were like, thoroughbred racehorse farms, where, you know, that we were raising these horses, we were sending them auction and they're getting raced and then they were running the state's races and stuff, where you knew the figures or claiming races, where you knew that horse was, was claiming to be twenty-five thousand dollars at the end of the race. Or, Doug Derry, for what it matters, he's winning a million dollars. But the, the farms we're in debate with are show horses. They are people's personal, rival on their friends. You know, they're not, they're not making any money, they spend a whole lot of money to win a little ribbon. Okay?
Shh, don't tell us.
But you know what I'm saying? It's, it's not a lucrative, you're not doing it as these people are paying the personal property tax. It's not a racehorse, you know? I can understand that totally if we're, had racehorses and we were raising forty yearlings here to send to Kentucky to set up. But we're not. These are all just backyard or show horses, you know? People are just having fun with them.
Joan, you had something to say?
Yeah, this is just a point of clarification. If, if you were to, um, choose the twenty thousand dollars, um, it's a point of clarification, it's the assessed value. Correct, it's not the full value. Because in Public Act fourteen dash thirty-three also amended twelve dash ninety-one to clarify that the exemption is assessed value. Okay. So you can theoretically, you have a twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollar horse. But you're saying, is that the assessed value?
Absolutely.
Robin, what's the timing, the actual timing that the horse would be in the town?
So if, if we weren't concerned about situs, it's what's existing on the property as of October first. Um, if we're delving into situs, then if you're moving your horse, as you do with yours from one, um, facility to another and they're not in your facility the three months closest to ten one, then you would, um, declare them to be whatever other facility you're in at that point. So October first is the magic date and twelve forty-one and twelve forty-three are your statutes.
Well, because a lot of these horses went in these farms, they come in for two months for training. And they, the, but I think a lot of this too is the paperwork involved.
It's got a big barn.
Is, you have to hire a secretary. This horse came in on April first, he was in for training for forty-five days, he went home. And I, I mean, it's a constant circulation of animals. And that in itself is a lot of, I mean, that produces a ton of paperwork.
Well, we've had to start logs and journals for all of us now in anticipation of wars.
Logging, I mean, just for billing purposes and such?
No, because half the horses come in for trials. So you get a horse comes in, a kid wants to try it, it stays for a week, three days.
And you don't charge for that.
No, no.
Then, then it's not taxed, so then you don't put it on the list.
Yeah, but again, this is where the amount of paperwork, as Carol's trying to tell you guys, is we got enough to do. And it's getting, it's getting...
So do you guys.
Yeah, all businesses scale the same way. Oh, I, I, yeah, paper reduction has not happened as they promised years ago. But I understand that, Kevin, and that's...
So simplify it, log it out.
Yeah.
Get rid of all the paperwork.
So I mean...
To make it fifty thousand.
Again, I guess what I would, what I would, what I would request or, or put on the table for you guys tonight is if, if you can't say we're gonna get rid of it altogether, then extend it and do some more research on that, on that animal.
That's what we're doing, Kevin. I don't, I said at the very beginning, I don't have this prepared. The attorney's working on it. It's, it's, you know, we, I would, I had hoped that we would have a conversation today and next time. But as I said right at the beginning, we're not voting on this tonight, this is a conversation. So, um, you know, I appreciate everyone coming out. I'd, I'd like to have more conversation amongst the board of selectmen and, and see where everybody's feeling. I know where you are all standing.
Mr., can I ask, then, I understand what you're saying now, Mr. Olson, can you kind of elaborate how you feel about it? Or, I mean...
Individually, yes.
Individually, I mean, can we poll the, poll the voters?
As a neighbor of Laramore, I, I love, I love what they've done over there.
And everybody's gonna walk out and get friends.
No, as a neighbor, I mean, when Kevin first approached me about the meeting, the pre-meeting before he started coming to town meetings, I, I told him, as a, as a full disclosure, I said, I'm, I'm a neighbor, but I'm now a selectman and I don't know if you want me there. And he said, oh, yeah, I do. And, and, and I was introduced as such and, and it puts me in a, in a weird position. As, as a neighbor, I love what Laramore's done, I love what's happened at the top of the hill, on the right-hand side with you guys. It's, it's great. And I, and I, I want agriculture here too. The other part of my brain says that when I, and this could be a hundred percent wrong, but when I look at a farm or whatever, I don't, I don't look at a, a show stable that, that trains somebody else's horses and gets paid to do it. And, and a lot of times the people come to Laramore or Fogu Meadow or whatever because of the trainer, not because necessarily the facility, but the reputation that the trainer has. And it's a business. And so I have to, I, I look at it both ways. And I, as a selectman, I look at it as, as a, a, a means for revenue to the town, obviously. And is forty-five hundred dollars worth it? Isn't it worth it? The whole nine yards. But this assessing horses isn't something new in the town of Deep River. It's, it's not a new thing. And everybody with a horse that's, has a horse is, has been and will continue unless it changes, will be assessed. And it seems to be working and it hasn't been an issue. Um, it only became an issue recently. And it's not directly, in my opinion, it's not directly the farm that is responsible for this tax that we're having. It's, it's the horse, it's the horse owner. Just like somebody that owns a house or a piece of property or a plastic car or, or whatever it happens to be. You pay taxes on that, on your personal choice of what you wanna spend your money on. You can buy a car.
Trying to represent that most of the time.
No, I, yeah, exactly, exactly. It's, it's, it's why we have this discussion. I've been, I've lived in town for fifty, fifty-five years. And my property where we are, there's barbed wire that runs through. When Flatland Farm was an operational farm and the cows were, were roaming where my house is and all that kinda stuff. I don't remember it because I was a little, a little guy. So I, you know, I know the history of the town and I do want, and I like what's happened. So it's, you know, a neighbor thing versus a taxpayer thing versus a selectman thing. It's all, it's all a thing. And like Angus alluded, there's, there's four, there's close to five thousand people in town that we have to, as selectmen, look at the financial impact that it has on the rest of the people in town. And, you know, it's, 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 it's a tough decision, it's a tough decision. So that's, I didn't give you an answer, but I, but I, you know, I...
Taken to this political stuff.
He's learning, learning, learning quick.
It's, it's, it's just multiple, multiple hats. And I was on the Board of Education for seventeen years and it controls seventy percent of the town's budget. Now I'm involved with dealing one hundred percent of the budget. And you look at, you look at the school different now that you're a selectman. It's different. You know, and a horse owner, and a farm owner's gonna look at it different than, than the, the corporate owner of Humble Farms or the small business that's on the corner, you know, the anchoring compass. It's, 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 it's a different way that, all the, all the things have to be looked at with the management of the town. And it's, it's not an easy decision. It's not an easy decision. And it's, and it's, and taxes on horses have been here. This isn't something that's new. This isn't something that's new.
My taxes on my horses or the customers' horses aren't nearly as high as some of the other barns in this town.
But I think you have an opportunity here to, to lead in the state and say, no, we're not gonna take this ancient law and tax horses. And it's just like, I don't know if any of you saw the debate with Biden and, uh...
Bring in the national...
Yeah, we don't need to do a voice.
It was, it was, you're not doing something about busting. It was a constitutional, it was a, it was in the law of the nation. So he didn't wanna, um, interfere with the state. But that's, that's your goal, is to take the lead, not to take the backseat.
Me personally, I...
Ronnie, go ahead.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to make a comment. I do not live in Deep River. My horse was in Deep River. I probably spent your forty-five hundred dollars in this town. Pizza parties, Dunkin' Donuts, celebrations, uh, Red House to dinner, uh, pizzas, uh... What's that place over there? I, I, I go to Adam's Grocery Store instead of going and roast, on the way back from the barn, I go there. Walgreens over here. I, I, I think, you know, to jeopardize and to detour people that don't live in Deep River from bringing that business here or, 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 you know, costing them. Um, it's really, I, I, I think it's a... We, we've spent a lot of money on parties and, and just going out to lunch, going out to dinner.
And spending money in this town.
Yeah, absolutely. And I can name all the other, uh, out-of-towners that have spent tons of money in this town by being here. Having their horses here, gas, you know, everything.
What do you think, Twain?
Right.
Forget me. I'll go first.
Angus, you said you have a lawyer looking into this, who's the lawyer?
Jane Marsh is our town attorney and we just had, um, Tim Landrigan, um, who also wrote an opinion. The both of those, those, the lawyer that's looking into it is a town attorney who is creating. She's not looking into it so much as she's creating the documentation.
So Jane Marsh is creating...
Landrigan. Yes, Jane Marsh is our town attorney. She represents our town. She is creating the doc, the language and the documentation that we're going to vote on.
Okay. She also represents farm people, too?
No, she does not. She's been there for some forty-odd years and I guess, uh, that was long enough.
Go ahead, Mike, take it away.
I have mixed emotions. And I, I've swayed from one side to the other. I'm, I'm having a hard time grasping it. Um, as Jimmy said, I've lived here for fifty-six years.
You know the goal.
In the beginning, when this started, I've asked Angus a couple times, how much money are we gonna collect? How much money are we gonna collect? Is all this commotion worth a few thousand dollars, four thousand dollars? That's swaying that way. On the other side, we have almost five thousand residents that we have to take care of. And I'm just gonna pick on Robin because Robin's here. Every one of the departments in the town come to our budget workshops, where we're setting our budget together. And Robin will come and say, I need this, this and this. I wanna increase this line, I need five hundred dollars. I wanna increase this line by, by five hundred dollars. And we'll sit there and say, no, we can't afford it, we can't afford it, we can't afford it. So we nickel and dime everything to make this town run the way it's run for the past few years. We sacrificed a lot of road maintenance. When I first came on as a selectman three years ago, we took a hundred thousand dollars right off the road maintenance. That's tough to catch back up. That's my livelihood, I'm, I'm in construction. So it's, once you get behind, you never catch up. So I'm swaying from both sides to both sides, Jack. And I, I don't know, Kevin and I had a conversation outside earlier, um, I understand. And what this lady said over there, you had, you hit it right on the head now. We want people to come into this town and spend money. We do not wanna push people away from this town.
Well, the orders do.
Okay, but she, she... But that's what, you know, I want this town to keep thriving, forward. And the only way we're gonna thrive forward is to bring people into this town, not push them away. But how do we do it? And that's why Kevin and I talked outside. How, how are we gonna do this where it's gonna make everybody happy? And it's a tough decision that Jimmy has, Angus has, and I have. We want everyone to be happy. That's what I, I, I don't like controversy. I want this town to thrive the way it's always has and I want it to keep thriving.
And this is exactly the way we feel too. We want the thing to keep going smoothly as far as we can, you know, so...
But, but how, how do we get there commonly as a group, as an organization, as a family? Because we are a family, the town's a family. You know, the long time people that lived here, Ronnie, Ronnie and I grew up, Ronnie's a couple years old, but we grew up in the Windbrook section. You know, um, we believe in this community. Jimmy, that's why we're still here, that's why we're part of this selectman. That's why Jim and I are part of the Board of Education, because we believe in this community and we wanna keep it going. How we, how we come to that, I don't know. So I can't give you a direct answer, Jack, but I'm very passionate on both sides. For the town people and for you horse people. I mean, I would love to see, you know, another big stable come in here and, because it's gonna bring more revenue to the town.
Right down the street, another hundred acres.
No. That's okay, that's okay. I'll do cows.
We have to tax those.
We want people to come to our town and spend money.
Absolutely.
Not tax them, but we want people to spend money to make all the businesses thrive. Because when they thrive, we thrive as a community.
I know my family spends a lot of money downtown here, so...
Hey.
Keep going, honey. Get daddy's credit card, keep going. So I'm, I'm taxing for it, Jack, I...
I, I just, like I, like I said, just wanted to understand how everybody felt and, you know, hopefully that'll help everybody get on the same page.
I will say, speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for Jimmy, I don't get persuaded. And Angus is not gonna persuade me one way or the other. I'm a grown man, I can make my own decision. And what's best for the community, and if I vote against Angus or I vote with Angus, and same with Jimmy, we're gonna do what's best that we thinks together. And, um...
That's all I ask.
Right. So, I mean, um, hopefully we can come to a good resolution for everybody.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything different?
No, I just hope your debt, your tax, are you full-time?
Oh, yes.
Oh, you, you may be time, okay.
I think, you know, the, the concern is kind of, obviously, is that process on the backside of it, how that's gonna be addressed. So if you wanna continue to look into that, that would be helpful. I, the internet assessment piece of it doesn't...
I'm saying it's a tool, Kevin, and it'll be the same fashion that we've been doing all along.
That's a, it's, I'm, I'm vocalizing that's a concern. So we're happy to have, um, you know, I know you're saying you have legal counsel that's, that's looking into it. We're happy to provide... We're happy to provide additional legal counsel, um, to help you guys, you know, guide you and give you some more, maybe a different perspective on what, what's going on. And we almost brought them tonight, but I, again, we're trying to keep this amicable and we want to, we want to work, I'd much rather do this than keep going to court fighting you guys about other stuff. That's just a waste of our money. Uh, it's a waste of the taxpayers' money in this town. And we're obviously paying taxes in town, so not only are we paying taxes for you to fight us, we're also paying the attorney's bill on the other side. So it's a lot of wasted money in both, in both directions. So we want to avoid going forward, having the $4,500 getting eaten up in a half an hour of, well, 15 minutes of attorney's fees. So, um, I appreciate it. I know these guys really appreciate you listening. And like I said, I think if we can continue the research and, and please, I'm happy to continue to talk with you guys, you know, um, but we can also help provide another legal or multiple legal opinions out of it if that would help you.
Well, I think if we got three lawyers in a room, we could get three different opinions. And they could charge us all, but you know, Dwayne, I think you said you had something.
Yeah, I'm going to throw it back at Jack. I got a question for you because you had made a comment while we were talking about the $20,000 threshold. And you said $50,000. Would that change your mind?
Then there'd be absolutely zero money coming in.
Okay, I'm just asking a simple question.
I got a question. You referred to Kellen Morris, um,
Legislature.
Legislature there. What made you choose to base off of that one and not the other ones?
Because I thought that it found, that it provided a spot that was in between zero and where we are.
I'm just curious, but I'm sure it's all 31 of them.
Actually, it's pretty funny.
Kellen, Kellen Worth is the only out of the 30 that has a cap. Every other town that has adopted it, has adopted it fully to the statute, not. And, and that's where the, that's where the legal questions kind of come into play. And some of this documentation from the legislature and stuff that Jones brought, um, say that it may be a sticky area for you guys. Even though Kellen Worth done it, if it wound up going to court, it may, it may not be the right thing. So I don't, I don't know how that all plays out.
What other towns don't have it?
What other towns don't have a threshold? Don't have an exemption? Want to read all 169?
I think he's asking what 28-
What 30 towns?
Yeah.
No problem.
There's Essex down the street that they don't have.
Andover, And, Andover, and Sonia, I'm sorry, Andover has an exemption. Ashford has an exemption. Bar Camstead has an exemption. Chaplin has an exemption. Cheshire has an exemption. Clinton has an exemption. Colchester has an exemption. Columbia and Cromwell. Essex, Franklin, and Goshen. Killingworth, Lebanon, and New Canaan. Stonington, Thompson, Tallentown, Vernon, Volentown, Wyndham, Palmfrit, Rocky Hill, Roxbury, Salem, Salisbury, Southington, Stafford, and that's it. Those are the 30 that, that do have it now.
That, that excepted the, in its statutory-
Killingworth, Killingworth was one of those and they have, they have an exemption with a threshold. The others, the others have a threshold of zero.
I guess the, the, the kind of point with that is a court hasn't ruled on that. They've done it, but a court hasn't ruled that that is by statute.
And they haven't, it is not.
Correct, absolutely. But it's, it's to be, to, to be determined.
One more. If it's something different, I'd appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all the difference. So, uh, say you have a horse and we brought him in our barn and he's a $15,000 horse. And we trained him for three years and the person's been with this for three years, okay? And then no tax has been paid on it. And then it leaves and she sells it for $300,000. She goes to Florida and sells it for $300,000 a year later.
And then we got screwed?
Yeah. So by spurship, somebody buys a horse for $200,000, okay? They can't ride one side of it. They bring it back, train it, it's worth nothing. It ends up being a dud. And they send it away. But while she's here, she has to pay the tax on that $200,000 and how every year she should have spent.
That's whatever the product, the horse owner said it was worth. The way it is now.
So they could actually, if they were out there and they'd already bought the horse a long time ago for $200,000 and then you bring it to our barn and it walks in the barn and I say it's $5,000 horse, that's what we turn the taxes on?
That's what the horse owner declares with the town. That's the way it is. That's the way that it is now.
So the horse owner depreciated three years or seven years? Whatever you typically, you, what you feel of the value of the horse is and you know what the values of your horses are. We're asking you to file honestly. So-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is like-
That's what's expected. You're signing your name to it. So that's-
Not your name.
Yeah, the horse owner is signing their declaration stating what they feel the true and actual value is.
So if he buys that horse for $40,000 and it doesn't take very long, in one year, that horse is down below the $20,000. If they depreciate the cost.
Then the following year you depreciate-
They declared the new map.
But that's what I'm saying. If somebody bought the horse-
Which is the way that it is.
In another town and moved it to our barn. If a, if a person bought the horse in another town, to another trainer, another barn, and they moved to our house, okay? And all they wrote down on the paper was they paid $35,000 for it. But then they came in and they were doing their personal property declaration and they said, oh, the horse is on 15. That's what I'm having.
So if they're, if they're signing their name to that document stating it's a $15,000 horse, that's what we accept as the town, as 15,000. If we were to find that that is inaccurate filing, that they were false, then you can put a 25% penalty on something when someone is not declaring the true and actual value.
Well, that's what I'm saying. How, how, how you, how you can give them-
That's what our homework is for, that's what Kevin asked us to do and that's, we're going to do a little more work on that. I thought, I thought we had thought of this part. I understand. Angus has a question.
All right. This is a really hard decision for the board here as what to do. The best way to help with that decision is have the agriculture people in town get involved with town politics. Get your voices in here. Be part of commissions and committees so that you can help make the decision.
And their spare time? Wow.
Can you go?
I hope there's three seats.
I just, is it, can I talk? Is it possible to just have like a minimal flat tax, like $25 a horse or something and you're still going to get some money and, ooh, what?
I don't believe that the legislation allows that, but we can certainly look into it.
Well, just a, a flat tax, like you do it for dogs. You know, you do it for dogs. Why couldn't you do it?
This is the first time it's ever been brought up, so it's, you know, I'm just going to say that.
It's not to make some money, but it's not to detour me from boarding my horse to-
Is there anything, is there anything else that's different, Ronnie?
Yeah, I have something totally different. Uh, I have been to a couple of meetings, but has the commercial land under the farm building been addressed?
No, that's, that's coming later.
After this is done, I'm sure we're going to be talking about it.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, can I, Robin, what is your process? So we gave you the list of who are, uh, boarders who are. And, um, someone gave us their papers and we sent them down to you. What's the process if, if the horse owner says, no, 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 I'll hand it in? How do you, because of the address that we gave you, then you, what do you do?
Um, I, I don't know if you've met Billy, but she's quite fabulous. So every list that you, all of your facilities have provided for us, she has made sure that each one of those on the list has a declaration. Stan did let us know, this one's got that, don't bother mailing. So we, um, get the declarations out to the, the boarders and then, um, we've had several conversations with many of them, but they, they do file a lot of them. Most of them do diligently on their own. If they don't, then the, the horse value is estimated and then they are given it, then they're sent a notice of the estimated value.
Who estimates?
I estimate the values. Based on like kind, so like you gave a lot of descriptive with your types of Holstein or the different breeds of them. So if I add like on average, I'm sorry, the, um-
I have a hard time, Robin.
I'm looking at Ron and I'm thinking, I'm thinking of Ron's place, but I'm sorry. So in reference to, um, like kind is how I reference it, I kind of just gave an average. So and believe it or not, as many don't like to think that, we do try to aim for the lower end of it. So if I have the majority of the horses that you were describing in your declarations and that I've gotten from others that were telling me five year, 10 year and they're-
So doesn't it benefit them to not do it if you average lower?
Um, if I'm, if I'm wrong, then, then yes, would, then it would, at some point we do catch up. So the first year we're, we're kind, the second year it's a little bit more, the third year a little bit more. And typically by the second or third year, the taxpayer is coming in saying, okay, you're close now. I'd like to, um, you know, discuss the value of, of this is true of it.
Could a discussion be started with the barn owner since we know the horses?
Absolutely. That would, you would help, it would certainly take, be very helpful to this office.
So could you, could, could after the deadline, gada, 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 can you come to each of us and say XYZ, I don't have the paperwork? Tell me about it. Instead of, wouldn't that make it easier for you?
It, it would, yes, um, both of us. I would assume, yes, we'll be much closer to the value of it. That would make it a lot easier. Yes, I would appreciate that.
But if we get away with it?
But then you guys would miss me, so.
Anything else? Yeah, it's certainly is.
In the interest, in the interest of understanding your timeframe and, and the last time you were right, we weren't at the meeting because we didn't know about it. I mean, we knew about selectmen's meeting, but we didn't know it was going to be on the agenda because we didn't put it on.
It was on.
I, I understand that, but that's why we work here. Um, mostly, I mean, we're traveling with horses and this and that. So the long and the short of it is, is two weeks enough for you guys to kind of, should we come back in two weeks or do you need more time?
We have the agenda in two weeks so we can have another conversation. We're not, you know, we're not going to forget about it. We have, I told you all I was going to work on this and I am working on it. You know, we're listening, we're researching, we're trying to get to somewhere that we can, that we can have a vote.
We, we appreciate that.
So thank you all for coming out. Um, I'm going to ask that we just table this until our next meeting and, uh, and we'll continue the conversation.
Yep.
And we'll move on. So if you want, if you want, why don't we take a couple of minute breaks unless everybody wants to stay and listen to our talk about the Deep River Energy Upgrade.
49, I have 49 declarations coming in. Some of them have to be. And that's this.
Well, that's what I told Angus. So when somebody says that.
Thank you.
That flips the triggers for you.
Thanks for coming.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
We'll get those.
You guys still running? Okay. Let's just open back up again with a discussion of item number three, which we pushed back to behind that, a review of Deep River Energy Upgrade. Um, if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, uh, prior to the Board of Finance meeting, we tried to move this forward to, um, to a town meeting so we could, uh, vote to borrow the money from Eversource. Eversource is financial arm, N-E-I-F is the name of the firm, um, in order to, to upgrade the energy, uh, systems in both the elementary, all three, the elementary schools, the library and the town hall.
And that was at that rate?
That was at 3.77. Um, the Board of Finance, uh, justifiably so, did not want to move that forward to a town meeting until we were able to distinguish how the, the distribution of paying that bill was going to be done because it's a, it's a bill that's going to come to the town.
Right.
And the school is not part of the town bill. We have not been able to come to a conclusion with that yet with the Board of Education or the new superintendent. Um, but we were able to distinguish that the bill will be, can be bifurcated, which means it can be separated. We can either get two separate bills. Or we can get, um, or we can get a bill that says elementary school this much.
Library this much, town hall.
And town hall this much.
Okay.
Um, I anticipate that we would have that answered before the end of this week. And it's, I, I, I really feel we need to or we're going to lose the option.
Well, that's the thing. Does it still allow, does it still allow time for them to do the school before?
Well, we need, they need to start in August. So we need to get this moving. Um, in order to do that, I think we're going to have, I, I don't want to do what we did last time and schedule a meeting and then pull back. So we will, we will have to have a, um, a special meeting, probably of both board boards to discuss just this so that I can explain to everyone what I think is the case and what, the way I understand it, and I need to confirm this, is that we will get two bills. Those bills will, will be for the elementary school and that will be the loan payment and their bill. And we will get a, a bill for the library and the, and the town hall. Those are, both will, are separate bills, but they're paid from the same-
Even though they're separate, they're the same.
They're paid from the same budget line. So I think that we can get this answered pretty quickly and we can get, get this project going. Um, one of the benefits to this is the bill comes six months after, uh, after the project is completed. So we will, we will benefit from the savings prior to paying the first bill. So I, I, I still think that this is something that we should, that we should move forward on if we can.
I agree. It's, my only concern is this being obligated to done before the kids come back to school.
Yeah. Well-
My biggest concern was the billing.
Yeah. Yeah, me too. That, that really is the only, the only thing that's schooling this. They can split the bill. It just becomes a question, the question, some of, one of the questions that I have that hasn't been answered yet is the bill separate from the energy bills? So they're going to get a light bill, a gas bill, an electric, you know, electricity bill, a gas bill and-
The loan.
The loan. And if that's the case, then we've got it, really, I want to see some actual numbers as to projected how it's going to be. And I hope that we can get that by the end of the week. They're just as anxious as we are to get started, so. Okay? So again, there's no vote there. Um, we'll table that.
Our audience of citizens.
Our audience of citizens, any questions?
It's gone.
No? Okay. Um, just a quick update. Route 80 is, uh, the Begonian Killingworth that they've seen, you've probably seen that catch basin's been raised here.
There's a bunch of machinery at the town garage.
I expect that's going to, yeah, that's, that's going to be coming, um, down, down pretty quickly. That machinery is for a different project. I think that's 145. No, that's, it's another state project, but not this project. That project, actually, whatever project it is, we're going to, we're going to be able to- That project actually, whatever project it is, we're going to, we're going to be able to, um, by sharing our parking space with them, we're gonna get a ton, tons and tons of, of, uh.
Material.
Material. So that, that'll come.
Could use about this much.
Go over some night. But Route eighty, so we're gonna see that under construction shortly.
And then Route eighty is, is it gonna come all the way to the light or where?
Catch basin is all the way to Route nine so far.
Yeah, I didn't know if it came all the way.
All the way down. Two things, three, maybe three things that you're going to notice when that gets done is, um, the state has set in place a policy that whenever they repave a road, a state highway, they narrow the travel way to eleven feet as opposed to twelve feet.
Make it legal? Standard?
Yeah, that is that.
Regardless of what it is, it now has to be that.
It will be eleven feet. That's an effort. I believe that the reasoning on that is that it allows more shoulder space for pedestrians and bikers. But also it, it, it's just, it's a proven, um, tool to slow traffic down. Um, I've mentioned to them in my last conversation last week about the drainage issues that we have in front of the ambulance barn. Also around the, um, around the corner between, um, the industrial park and the town garage. Kind of sheets across there and freezes over. We've had a couple of accidents here since I've been first started where trucks, cars are just trying to go up that hill and slide right off the road. So they're going to be looking at that. That, though, we're gonna have to stand, we have, this is probably the third time I've mentioned it to them and we're gonna need to, I need to continue to stand.
I can see the one by the ambulance barn, they're, uh, they've already put the basin top. I don't see any imperishes.
And that was my last conversation with them, was like, you know, did you go higher? Did you pay any attention to it, you know? And we're also going to see rumble strips. I'm asking them to keep those rumble strips at twelve feet as opposed to eleven, right on the, right on the lane travel, because those are loud.
Oh, they're gonna do the side ones versus the center one, because one forty-five is the center of the center.
The other, the only other thing we're going to see is right at the exit five interchange, um, they're going to put, um, exit lanes to repaint. It's so that, you know, it's so wide, you're gonna have a passing on the right lane and all that kind of thing if you're going on the highway. So that'll be a pretty dramatic change. But I think we'll all get used to it pretty quick.
Oh, yeah.
That's it for me.
Speaking of paving, there's any updates from Dibble? Now that it is nice and warm.
Yeah. But, you know, they got so far along.
Oh, absolutely. They're paving the Sabre High School right now.
He's promised me that, you know, he's moving us up as quickly as we can in the.
I'll call Jesse.
Yeah, me too. So if we can have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Always in favor?
Aye. It is eight oh five.
Eight oh five.